Six oh one. We gotta approve the minutes for.
Bionic.
Twenty second, twenty twenty four and March fourth, twenty twenty four. January twenty second, twenty four. March four. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any selectmen here that are here for the.
If I would place it back on the agenda because two of them wanted to come here and make their case to keep it on the warrant and have a public hearing. So.
All right, well, as of right now, there's nobody here to plead their case, so we'll just leave it as is for now. If we want to get them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, we're gonna start running out of time. Probably April first might be okay. We'll have to calculate. It will be.
But I won't be here that week.
Let's see how it goes at the meeting tonight. Maybe they might come. We can always talk about it later, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so. Guess we can open the public hearing for thirty five, thirty seven Hastings.
Before you hear any evidence, I'm gonna need you and Jay to go through the. Do you have that?
Oh, shoot.
I have it online. One second, please. Because three of you. You don't need a copy. It just has to be reflected in the minutes. That's all it has to do.
Okay.
So if you and Jay. Okay, here it is. Okay, you have to state that the board lacks a sufficient number of members necessary to have a valid vote, which you do, you need four, and without you, three, you got two. Include the facts. Why you're in conflict. Identify the legal requirement necessitated by the board, and that means the rule of necessity. And that as a last resort, you'll invoke the rule of necessity. So I need each of you to do that. So all you have to do is state your name, why you're in conflict, that you're invoking the rule of necessity.
All right, Damon Tenio, I'm in conflict due to business dealings with people at Imperial. And I do to invoke the rule.
Uh, Jake Cross, I'm gonna water to the proposed project and.
Okay, if Bill makes the hearing or he can do the Mullen Rule, he can miss one meeting. The next meeting, he'll have to do the same.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing for thirty five, thirty seven Hastings Street. The legal notice that was in the paper, in accordance with chapter forty eight, section eleven. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, at six P M. in person or virtual in the Mendon Town Hall at twenty Main Street Mendon. To consider a site plan review special permit submitted by John Denott for thirty five, thirty seven Hastings Street, map eleven, one forty two dash thirty five, map eleven, one forty two dash thirty seven, eighteen Washington Street, map eight dash two four two dash eighteen, and twenty Washington Street, map eight dash two four two dash twenty. For an age restricted mixed use development compromised comprised of mutual compatible and connected commercial and residential uses sharing critical infrastructure. Owners of the property is Hastings Street Plaza LLC. Plans are engineered by Tetra Tech, Nickerson Road, Marlboro.
Thank you very much. I've got a hard copy of the rendered site plan over there. I want to take a closer look. I have a hard time seeing the screen here. And I'll do my best to stay out of everyone's way because the presentation.
Did I say over?
Let's see, okay. For the record, Matt Moyan with Tetra Tech. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Hastings Street Plaza.
Can you talk us?
Sure, I will talk as loud as I can. So Matt Moyan with Tetra Tech, here on behalf of the applicant, Hastings Street Plaza LLC. Here to talk to you, as just described, about thirty five, thirty seven Hastings Street and eighteen and twenty Washington Street, a proposed mixed use development. Next slide if you may.
Just one second, ma'am. If you can't hear, can you come up here and sit while he's giving the presentation? So you can try to hear everything a little better.
Okay. State your name, so.
You can sit right at the table. Come on up. And if you do, any questions, anybody, just please state your name and your address when you are.
So existing conditions show on the screen here. We've got thirty five and thirty seven Hastings Street, eighteen and twenty Washington Street. The assemblage is about eighteen point three acres with frontage along Route sixteen and Washington Street. The existing uses on site are the Mendon driving range, the former Berry's Place Restaurant, and two single family residences. Next slide, please. Of the eighteen point three acre assemblage, there's sixteen point five three acres that are considered potentially developable area based on the local bylaw definitions. That's this area, backs, back portion of the site here, left of the white dash line. That area is bordering vegetated wetland and flood plain, so it's not considered developable for the purposes of the project. Next slide, please. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about an age restricted mixed use development that is consistent with the overlay district criteria. It is consistent with the town of Mendon master plan vision, and it incorporates all applicable Massachusetts sustainable development principles. The project consists of both residential and commercial components. The commercial component has frontage along Route sixteen. It consists of a market with outdoor retail and a salon. The market is about thirty six thousand five hundred square feet. Of that eight thousand is gonna be outdoor sales space, and the salon is forty eight hundred square feet. There are a hundred and forty eight parking spaces to support the commercial development. The area associated with those improvements equates to about twenty four percent of the developable area on site, so it falls in between the twenty and sixty percent minimum and maximum requirements in the bylaw. As you work your way towards the rear of the site, you have the residential component. This loop road here has thirty two new age restricted single family homes. As you look up towards the Washington Street corridor, we have a new barn structure that will replace the existing barn structure at eighteen Washington Street. And just as a clarifying point, eighteen is also known as twelve Washington Street. So twelve is the address, eighteen's the tax parcel. It's a little odd, but that's what we're going with. So if I use those interchangeable, I apologize. And then we have two existing residences. You have the existing home at eighteen Washington Street and the existing home at twenty Washington Street. Those will be renovated as part of the project. We focus the majority of the residential development to the interior of the site to both maintain the character, the existing character of Washington Street, and minimize impacts on the surrounding butters. Of those thirty five units, there are four affordable units. That equates to a little more than eleven percent of the development will be considered affordable units. And then we're talking about per density, about two point eight units per acre, which is slightly less than the three units per acre allowed under the law. So the density is a little less than what it otherwise would be allowed. Site access is gonna be exclusively along Route sixteen, with the exception of the two existing driveways that'll be maintained for the residences along Washington Street. The primary access point will be at the Route sixteen Millville Road intersection with the main access drive. It's proposed to be a signalized intersection. We're currently working with Mass DOT, as I'm sure all of you are aware. They're looking to do improvements along this corridor, so we've been working hand in hand with them to figure out what the best solution is once this development's incorporated. There's also secondary access just to the east here. It'll be a right in, right out, primarily for folks traveling westbound on Route sixteen that wanna enter the development, and certainly delivery vehicles and fire after that. Once you enter the site, there's two way circulation throughout. The sole exception to that is a one way circulation around the rear of the market and outdoor retail for delivery vehicles primarily. We really don't, aren't looking to have anything other than firefighting equipment and delivery vehicles, so we're trying to minimize the circulation around that, that use. Two way circulation to the residential component. In terms of pedestrian circulation, primarily gonna be from new sidewalks, both along the Route sixteen front engine at the intersection and then internal to the site. We have connecting sidewalks between the residential and commercial use with dedicated crosswalk areas for safe circulation of the pedestrians. And then there's a walking path proposed to take advantage of all the woodland area and natural areas we're trying to maintain with the project to the rear of the site. So certainly a benefit for those onsite, and ideally it'll be a benefit for the public as well. If you don't mind going to the next slide for me. Stormwater management infrastructure throughout the site is gonna be a closed drainage network that'll capture and convey the runoff through a water quality structure toward the rear of the site and into an infiltration basin. That basin will provide recharge, water quality treatment, and peak rate attenuation. In whole, the stormwater management system on site will comply with all the Massachusetts stormwater management standards. Next slide. From a utility perspective, there's quite a few utilities that we're gonna be talking about here tonight. The first one is the public water supply. So given the town of Mendon doesn't have available water and sewer along Route sixteen or Washington Street, we're looking at an onsite public water supply consisting of two wells at the rear of the site. And this dash line you can see around the outside is what's called the zone one radius. So that's the protective area for the wells for the withdrawal rate that the project's proposing. All that infrastructure will be at the rear of the site. Everything within that zone one radius, with the exception of the gravel drive and the water supply infrastructure, will be maintained in its existing state. We'll also have onsite wastewater disposal to the rear of the site up near Washington Street. There'll be two separate systems, one for the residential use, one for the commercial use. We've done some initial soil testing and provided all that information to the Mendon Board of Health, and we've used it for sizing these particular locations and orientations you see on the plans today. As for natural gas, electric, telephone data, all that infrastructure is currently available along the Route sixteen corridor, so the project will tie in right near the main signal here. It's a natural gas, electric, telephone data as needed to support the development. Fire protection's also provided. There's a cistern, really a twin cistern at the secondary access point. Forty thousand gallon cistern for fire protection. That was based on a discussion we had with the prior fire chief about providing additional protection to the Mendon Center District as opposed to just the project. So we've maintained that on the site. And then there's a second cistern located behind the salon, just as you're entering the residential component. That'll be used for both the onsite residential and commercial in concert with the one on the front. Next slide, please. Oops, sorry, one back. My apologies, jumped the gun. In terms of landscaping, you can see here, a lot of green space. The dark green is the existing woodland to remain. The lighter green you see throughout is a combination of lawn areas, perennials, annuals, shrubs. Those details will be worked out as the project evolves. But what I wanna focus on primarily is this dark wooded area that we're gonna maintain. And these symbols you see along the perimeter and the interior, those are the proposed trees for the project. So on the commercial side of things, we have interior landscape islands. We also have perimeter screening along, primarily along thirty three Hastings. We'll have screening along, low screening along the Route sixteen front edge, and some screening along the rear of the salon as well. As you work your way into the residential area, we have a nice band of screening to break up the commercial component and the residential component. And then making your way around the residential development, there'll be street side plantings. There's perimeter plantings between Washington Street and the residential development, primarily to kind of shield that from view as you're driving down Washington Street. And then this mass of existing vegetation that will remain. Now we can go to the next slide, thank you. On the architectural side of things, looking for a country style feel for both the commercial and residential component. This is just an architectural representation of what the client is thinking for the residential units. This is not exactly what it's gonna be, but this is intended to give you an idea of the feel they're going for. Next slide, please. And then we have some elevations of the market and outdoor retail. Top of the screen here is the front elevation, so you have the main entrance to the market on the right hand side of the site. You have outdoor retail on the left hand side. And as you work your way down this screen, you know, the rear is kind of pretty basic. And then the two side elevations. Next slide, if you would. So we're primarily here looking for age restricted mixed use development special permit from the board. Plenty of justification in the submission, but just to kind of hit on the highlights. And most importantly, we meet the criteria of the overlay district, and we're consistent with the town amendment vision and the master plan. The age restricted use certainly meets the need both in town and really statewide. It's something that's lacking for housing. We put a lot of time and thought into the density of development, trying to kind of tighten it up towards Route sixteen to the center of the site to minimize any impacts on butters in the surrounding area. So we tried to efficiently use the land we had to both minimize sprawl throughout the town and to focus the development where it wants to be, just close to the Route sixteen corridor. With that, was trying to maintain the Washington Street, the existing character on Washington Street, so maintaining as much vegetation as we can through this area before we get to what's basically be like an onsite field, if you will, through the trees. And then maintaining the existing residence at eighteen and really trying to mimic the existing barn, but in a new structure. The signalized intersection down along Route sixteen will certainly make life a lot easier if you're trying to take lefts onto Route sixteen or onto Millville Road. So it'll improve both the safety and operations of that area. There's the added firefighting benefits and then the positive fiscal impact that the development will provide. Next slide, if you would. We are requesting a one waiver as part of the project, and it's a request for reduction in parking, specifically for the commercial component, as allowed under the bylaw. We've spent some time really starting to think about what the demand would be for the use. And then we've also looked at some guidance, a model parking bylaw, smart parking bylaw that the state put out, to try to focus on hitting our needs, minimizing the amount of impervious, which requires more stormwater treatment, more impacts to natural areas. And then we have a transportation demand management plan that'll encourage bicycles, electric vehicles, carpooling for workers. So we have, we focused on that to try to come up with a parking program that really fits the need in the town and for the use. One more slide, if you would. And to just kind of hit on the highlights, if you miss anything, it's everything else that you get this great. You know, big thing, consistent with the overlay district and the master plan. I've said that a few times. It's really an ideal location for development. We have a developed Route sixteen corridor, adding a commercial component to an already commercialized corridor. We've got existing infrastructure that's easy to tap into. We have space for onsite water and wastewater, and it's proximate to Mendon Center District. So the whole idea of this mixed use approach is walkability, recreating a small town feel. So you don't want this to be out in the middle of nowhere. You want this where your dense development is, where your dense residential is, so that people can ideally bike, walk, interact in one location. Some of the sustainable development principles that we've incorporated, and we've incorporated all applicable ones. There are ten that Massachusetts put out there. These are really the highlights. We concentrate the development, mixing the uses residential, commercial. We're expanding the opportunity for housing choices, primarily the age restricted housings, to two unit housing that doesn't necessarily exist in rural settings where when all the kids are gone, someone has little kids, someday they'll be gone, the house is gonna be too big, but maybe we don't wanna leave town. This is a good opportunity for folks to stay in town. As I just mentioned, walkable neighborhoods, dense development in a dense area, and then trying to preserve open space as best we can and minimize sprawl. So thirty five units in a fairly dense area is really beneficial to the housing demand in town. Signalized intersection improvements to safety and operations, firefighting benefits, and then of course the economic benefits that the commercial and residential components will bring to town. That's everything I have for kind of an overview. Would like to give the board an opportunity to ask questions, provide comments, and put the comments that you guys are most interested in.
I just wanted to go over a couple of things, one with the board. Technically, this is the special permit under the armada, call it the armada. But it's also a special permit for a stormwater permit, which Jeff looks at anyway.
Right.
As we do any major, any development that comes in front of the board, we distributed this, all the plans and narratives to the department heads. We received comments from D P W. We just wanted to make sure the roads were staying private. We didn't want anything to do with it, which we assured him they would. The Board of Health has asked for some more time for their consultant to take a look at the proposal as far as septic and water's concerned. Obviously, they get as much time as they want. And we received comments, preliminary comments from the conservation agent, which I'll just, there are quite a few. I think you've got these in your packet. But she, you know, she goes through that she wants to make sure that the Mass Stormwater Principles are taken care of, that who's gonna take care of the conservation area? Are we deeding this off to somewhere, or is it the homeowners association? That's something, you'll have an opportunity to comment.
I think conservation will probably control that. That will be part of their hearing.
I don't think, I'd have to look at the bylaw. I don't think we have any guidelines toward that. We probably should. I'll double check. A comment about the walking path and that to make sure it's four foot wide and that it's protected when it's within the hundred foot buffer zone. I'm paraphrasing here. Anybody would like a copy of this? We have it in our office. You already have it, and they'll be responding to this. Wanna make sure the trails are accessible, if possible. That they are in front or will be. Are you in front of Conscom yet?
We will be. So we've submitted notice of intent application. We're on the agenda for next Thursday, I believe it is.
Okay. Wants to know whether the roadways will be gravel or not. It's a good question. And my thing won't scroll down, so just bear with me.
Conservation, they did not get, did they get a set of plans?
Oh, yeah.
So they do.
She's commenting on these. These are preliminary comments. She paraphrased that. We'll ask them to respond to each and every one. You have them and the public, the public documents.
Okay, that's what I make sure.
And lastly, usually right here, we'll have Jeff Graves, our civil engineer, but he is very sick. I sent you his email. I talked to Jeff Friday, and he said he wasn't feeling great. I didn't know it was that bad. But unfortunately, we won't have his comments till the next meeting, I hope.
Right, yeah, that's true.
Soon he's okay. And then I had some of my own comments. I know that you're talking, could you go back to where the houses, the two existing? Yeah, right.
Yeah, if you keep going back to a few slides, it'll be the old one.
The ones on Washington Street.
Keep going back a couple of slides.
Have they, you haven't gone to the historic district on these yet, have you?
No, not yet. So we're gonna be going through the MEPA process at the state level. So that'll require.
But there's a historic district that you'll be required to get approval to any architectural changes you're making. All to all three, actually, the two houses in the barn.
Yeah.
Emergency access, you're not using Washington Street as an emergency access?
No.
That was the old plan, I guess.
Yeah, we assumed they were gonna, but.
But that's good, though. That keeps everything.
No, so these two access points, unless the fire chief has.
The fire department said it was okay.
Yeah, as I say, unless the fire chief has concerns, but the understanding where we left it last time was these two points of access and the fact that this kind of loop road is so proximate to these two points, that that would be satisfactory.
And then the vegetation you're using to separate the houses and the commercial and the Washington Street, is there a berm?
There's no berm proposed right now.
Any reason why not? It would help.
We don't see a need for one, given the fact that the existing grade, both from Route sixteen and from Washington Street, falls off to the back of the site towards the island. You're almost gonna kind of sort of see over this as you look in, and this is the darker green you can see here are evergreens.
Yeah.
The idea is to not make a wall, because that never works great, but really start.
Doesn't have to be a wall.
Really start to screen it. The problem with berms is you start diverting stormwater and concentrating stormwater, which is a challenge, yeah.
A big lake. And lastly, or at least on that topic, you're giving us a landscaping plan?
There is a landscaping plan.
I have it.
Yeah, yeah, yes, towards the back.
Where are you at with Mass DOT?
It's ongoing, so as we go through the MEPA process, they will begin providing more direct comments. We've had initial discussions with them about our traffic impact and access study. We've had discussions about intersection controls, but we need to go through that state process before they really start providing definitive comments and direction.
Yeah.
And that's a typical thing for any project that requires, that hits the thresholds and requires state.
Yeah, I know, and, you know, they're getting closer to finalizing. And we have another project at the, you'll be seeing maybe at the next meeting, the intersection of north and Milford.
Oh.
One, one main.
The old Finio property.
Oh, Finio, yeah.
Finio, is that it? Sorry. And so they're also going back to Mass DOT because these are all changes, so.
There's a lot of action that's happening.
Timing is important, if you can, for you and for the other applicant. I'm good.
I got a question about, so the two houses that are on Washington Street, those are gonna be included in the over fifty five or those? Okay, and those, I know you have a, you have a septic system for all the houses in there, but those two houses will be on, still on their own private septic, or are they included in the?
This one will be on its own private septic.
Okay.
This one, we're gonna pull.
You're gonna include it into that, okay.
Yes. Love to pull this one in, but.
A little too far away.
Doesn't make sense until it's timed.
If you can get it there, that's okay. Good, thank you. That's all I, that's, I mean, other than what Jeff, Jeff is gonna go through everything and pick everything apart and look at it, you know, and come back with his opinions. And at this point, I can take a few questions from the audience, or if anybody could.
Are these all two bedroom or one bedroom?
Yeah, two bedroom. Two bedroom with a garage.
Yeah.
So if this is not gonna be a homeowners association, then the town's gonna have to accept the road.
It is expected to be a homeowners association.
Okay, so being a homeowners association, what are you, what are you planning on doing for snow removal? Where you gonna, where you gonna pile it up? You gonna truck it offsite? What's gonna go on?
Yeah, so the commercial component likely will be trucked offsite, like the applicant does at their other developments. The residential component will be like any other neighborhood. Primarily, it's gonna be, you know, piled up against the edge of the road. If you get, you know, excess snow, then the hot stuff.
But I'm looking at the way this is designed with the circle, where you gonna, where you gonna push it to?
And you typically ask where snow storage is going to be on site, right?
Right.
I think you might wanna take a look at that.
Yeah, so snow storage onsite and commercially, there's some dedicated spaces over here. Snow storage in the residential is gonna be between driveways, right, on the shoulders, to the extent.
Just like any other subdivision that you would see.
Exactly, to the extent that it gets to a point where, you know, as you say, we get back to that two foot storms, they're gonna have to remove some of the snow.
The town would not.
The town would not. If the town took the road over, they would not be removing snow. They would just be plowing it and, you know, dealing with it as time goes on. Moving it around.
Is the question rooted in the density of the project and the lack of space for it?
Yeah, to the extent there's a problem with snow storage on-site, which we don't anticipate there would be, no, not unlike any other.
What's the road width?
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
The distance between the units?
Distance between the units is twenty feet, that's closest point, a little more than that. Right. Any other questions for the?
So you're gonna have a public water supply?
Public water supply, correct. Yeah, two wells.
Where is the well?
Two wells. Circle there. At the river side, and then the circle you see here is the protective radius for the withdrawal rate we have, which is total of twelve thousand gallons per day. And that's, yeah, public, right, so that's, that's why you have to have that radius. The radius is important to protect the environment, protect the water supply. So you need this radius. You can definitely show them in that radius with the exception of direct improvement. So like the well tank and the pump house can be, the ground of that can be, you can. They want you to maintain the natural. Is that well supplying water to the grocery store as well? It'll provide to residential and commercial. And it's enough water there per gallon, if there's enough. We have to run a pumping test, so DEP has approved us running a pumping test for up to twelve thousand gallons per day. The results of that will be telling us what our withdrawal rate can be. Okay. Initial indications are there's no concerns about water, given the expansive wetlands to the rear and how much undeveloped area there is there. But until you run a pumping test, you know, you can't show DEP you have it. Yes, right. We have to go through that process, and they've given us the green light to do so.
Will those wells potentially have?
Hold on, hold on. You gotta state your name, address, and then you can, but we're just gonna get through everybody on the, on the board, and then we're gonna allow the audience to talk. Thank you.
I have one follow-up, if I may, before Jay. The two, are they private parcels with radius, right, these three? Do you have control over those?
The applicant is actively working on either some type of control, right?
Easement.
Versus restriction, easement.
They'll have to have that.
That's all required by DEP. The applicant has to have some control over the entire.
That they'll never be.
Yeah, and these areas are really of no value, so the buyer's, this is all well. So it's undevelopable and, yeah, there's, it might be some value.
Nice change.
Yeah, in terms of development.
Just based on the sketch for the store, the grocery store, is there commercial space above? I saw those windows in the set, it looks like.
No, this is just aesthetics, yeah, yeah, single floor market. The architects still work on the full, like, you know, any other grocery store. Maybe there's like an office, mezzanine, small space for the manager, but no intention of a second store here.
Are there, are there plans, if there's gonna be a traffic light there, are there plans for a crosswalk to go across the street to the sub shop, the coffee shop?
Yeah, yeah, if you might, don't mind going back to that site plan. Hopefully show up on here or not, but yeah, so. Crosswalk here, across the main site drive, and then you've got a crosswalk from our site to this central island that'll allow you to get to both the gas station, Dunkin' Donuts, all the other commercial uses here, and then across this kind of like turn lane to get to Quik Plaza, and then the sidewalks that continue down sixteen.
Curious if there's any study down on the impact of the schools. I know it's over fifty-five, but only one residence required to be over fifty-five. If you have local residents who are looking at downsides, they're leaving a single-family home to move into a smaller facility like this and potentially have a new family moving into that residence and bringing more students and kids into the classroom. So is there any thought on the impact of that?
We've looked at, you know, this particular development, what happens when people sell houses, you know, whether they move here, they move out of town, that's just normal, normal change of ownership.
What was the impact of, did you study?
Very few studies that the state has done for this type of use, especially with a two-bedroom unit. Very little school-aged children. I think we accounted for a handful just in our financial numbers as part of that impact assessment, but typically you don't see any with two-bedroom.
Okay, maybe guesswork at best?
It's based on some state guidance, so they've looked at this across the state, both for affordable housing units and then for these age.
Maybe, maybe if you look up that number and.
Yeah, we've got, it's in the financial, the fiscal impact assessment in the filing. There's some more details on there, but in general, you don't.
We'll highlight it.
You don't see a lot of school-aged children.
Okay, thank you. And then just one quick question, I guess, I don't know, it sounds like there'll be other sessions and maybe the more detailed questions will come in, but with regard to the septic and the well locations, how do you determine whether, is it just, is it mainly driven by the ability to create that buffer? Or, you know, could they be flip-flopped, or what's the decision-making process like for where those go?
There's a lot of decisions that go into that, but you kind of hit the nail on the head here. The primary one is the zone one radius. So that's driven by how much water you're withdrawing from the ground. And then you ideally want to locate wells, wetland areas near waterways, you know, those types of resources that, yeah, feed water back into the ground. So that was the driver of putting the wells here. There's setbacks requirements from property lines, from private wells, from resource areas that go into play for where you cite the construction systems. So taking into account all those things, all the different alternatives we looked at over the years, geography, the wetlands, the existing woodland area here. The wells want to be here because it can, it can go right up near the wetland. It can, it allows us to maintain all this existing vegetation close to the resource areas. So once you put that into place, then it's, all right, where do these, where do these septic systems want to fit? And we can't be in the zone one radius. We wanted to push the development as close to sixteen as we could, so that really left us this area and to meet the setbacks from twenty-two, twenty, sixteen, and the zone one and the wetlands really kind of forces you into a configuration similar to that. There's some, there's some minor manipulations that can be made, but really talking about that area. Anybody else on the board? I, Bill, how are you? I see you're on. You're on mute. You gotta unmute yourself.
Everybody.
You gotta unmute yourself.
Could you do it?
Not on this.
There you go.
Yeah, sorry, Mike, guys. I seem to have developed a cold this afternoon, so a little bit out of kilter.
Glad, glad to see you here.
Yeah.
So you need to, that, we're having the, the lack of board members that can.
You need to invoke the rule of necessity, Bill, because you're in the butter. So I need you to state who you are, why you're in conflict, and that you're invoking the rule of necessity.
Yeah, William Abercino, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm in a buttered property, approximately probably two hundred feet away, and I'm invoking the rule of necessity.
Thank you. You have any questions about this? I know you kind of jumped on late, but.
No, I've been following it along and, you know, I see the copy of the plans and stuff they sent the other day, and I reviewed it pretty well. I particularly don't have any questions. I, I think the layout is the way they're accessed in Route sixteen. I think it worked, so I don't have any issue with it, but. I, obviously, I didn't hear anybody's rebuttals previously, so I'm not sure what the concerns would be, if there are any, but I think it's development the town amendment is looking for. That's why we voted in the final.
Sounds good. I'm gonna turn it over to the audience. I think everybody on the board has asked their questions for right now, now that we don't have Jeff here with us. So once Jeff is here, we'll have probably a lot more questions or a lot more answers for everybody as well. Brendan?
Hello, Brendan Chanel, sixteen Washington Street, asking the butter. The question I have is about the proximity of the septic to the wells. I know they're within the setback. Last time this was in front of the board, there was an offer made to connect certain of the butters to the water system.
I believe, yeah.
Yeah, we hear the question, Damon, is there any way to increase the volume to the?
Come on, if you want to come up and speak into the microphone again, thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair. Brendan Chanel, sixteen Washington Street. I asked a question about the possibility of tying in some of the butters to the water system, specifically those that are close to the leaching fields. It was presented last time this was in front of the board as an option. I was wondering if that was still on the table.
I think we got an answer from. See if I'm close enough to the mic over here. Yeah, as far as I understand, the applicant still intends to take that into consideration. There is excess volume in our withdrawal rate based on the development we're proposing today, so there's an opportunity to provide that as appropriate.
So I'm gonna need you to submit that in writing when you're comfortable with it and which houses.
It's gonna be dependent on the need, so we'll submit something in writing.
Yeah, we'll go from there.
Because you're gonna have to figure out how much water you have there before you're gonna. And what the need is for the.
Right, and if it gets to approval, you need to codify this somehow. We'll figure that out.
The way, the way we had left it last time was there is excess capacity in the wells. If there was reason or justification for a butter to need to tie into the well, there would be an opportunity for a number of butters to tie in and keep the withdrawal rate below our maximum.
Okay, where is the septic?
Those two pieces there.
So how many butters are close to it?
Two, sixteen and twenty-two. And one of them is gonna be, you own one of them. Oh. Well, yeah, I mean technically that was, but they're part of the project, so. Oh, well, twenty-two is. Twenty-two, sixteen, and it's kind of close to the.
So they're the obvious choices.
Yeah, and the systems are well excessive of the setback requirements under Title V, but I understand the concern.
Yeah, just the size of it.
Yeah. Any other questions? Are you there?
While I'm here.
One more, one more question regarding the screening features, some of the vegetation. So assuming that's going to be maintained by the HOA, if something, one of the evergreen trees dies or falls over, will it be replaced? Or is it just, once it's there, it's?
Yeah, I can't speak for the HOA down the line, but yeah, the landscaping would be maintained.
Can we put that in as a conditionist project?
We can, within.
Generally, generally, the HOAs develop their own board. I mean, my history with them, and they manage that on their own, to the HOA. You know, upkeep of the property comes through the HOA.
But I think to Barry's point, we can put something reasonable that they are warranted for a certain amount of years, but you can't, you can't go beyond reason.
Hurricane comes through or something.
Right.
If something falls over, that's their, that's part of their maintenance program. HOA has like a standard.
But if it dies because it wasn't planted properly or it's a dead tree, that's different.
Yeah, there's typically a one-year warranty for landscape planting. Sometimes there'll be a two-year warranty depending on where you're purchasing from. If I may, just jump back to the septic concern you mentioned.
Sure.
We did look at another alternative about for this, for this portion of the septic system, kind of rotating this piece to use a little bit more of this land and pull it a bit further away from sixteen. So we've evaluated that, it appears feasible, and we're considering submitting that as part of the provision.
Pulling it back?
Yeah, pulling it back a little further to Brendan's point about approximately, that just, you know, it's downgraded. It's well, well above the setback, but this is kind of a dead zone here. So, you know, in our eyes, it's a good use of the site to, if we can, if it does work with the Board of Health eventually, pull this, kind of this half of it down a little bit closer to the zone one, a little further away from the butter. That'll allow a little bit more screening, which is a benefit, and it'll push this little absorption system a little further away. Nice. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, just to get, and you can pull that thread a little bit. I'm just curious, how large are those systems?
Their size based on the Title V requirements, so we have specific sizing requirements for commercial in terms of gallon per day is per square foot, and then specific sizing requirements for age restricted two-bedroom homes. So there's a gallon per day design criteria. This, it's, so there's that. So all those things come into play, and the size of these systems are based on the soil testing we've done and the Title V calculations for waste water disposal.
Yeah, and I ask because that's, that's been a concern all along, is just the amount of water on the property. The driving range itself is at times, it's not available for use because it's so wet, you sink into it. And then I even look at, you know, the test holes, the current holes that were dug, you know, along the border of twenty, Washington. I mean, just a couple of weeks back, those test holes were filled with standing water for days. Where's the water gonna go?
Yeah, so this will, these are gonna be raised systems to have the minimum separation required from the seasonal high groundwater. So we're gonna have to go through a waste water disposal system construction firm approval with the Board Health and meet all the Title V criteria. The water's gonna continue to go where it goes today, which is down towards the wetlands. This portion of the site's gonna be elevated to meet those criteria. This portion of the site is also gonna be slightly elevated to provide an adequate transition into the site from Route sixteen. So we've taken all of that into consideration for both the stormwater and sewer designs.
But it is graded towards the, towards the well site, but it's also graded towards twenty as well. Like I said, that whole area was standing water.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a finger behind twenty that kind of sticks out, that floodplain. So off of this wetland as well, a figure that comes into twenty, so that gets it inundated.
So I guess, I don't know, a lot of this will come down to the Board of Health.
Board of Health will do all the inspections, yeah.
Inspections if we're not, but are there other, you know, more, I don't know, cutting-edge systems available with a smaller footprint or other options available if it does it?
Yeah, that's all gonna be part of the Board of Health process, all part of their approval process. So because we're, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but because we're within an interwalled protection area, so you've got a zone one of them, there's a protection area beyond that, we're in a nitrogen-sensitive area. So these septic systems have to follow some additional criteria under Title V. So we're gonna have recirculated sand filters in addition to just typical septic tanks, grease traps. That provides some nitrogen reduction in a little bit. Better effluent for discharging into the groundwater, because it gets cycled through a sand media five, six, seven times. So increases, increases the opportunity.
It's always more reason the Board of Health needs more time.
Exactly. Yeah, we have a whole separate permitting process we're gonna have to go through. So this is just, this is a, here's generally what the size is, here's where we intend to locate them. We're gonna have to do a very detailed design, construction-level design, and submit that to the Board of Health for their review and approval down the road. This is really about one step of a, a number of steps we're gonna have to take both locally and at the state level. Thank you.
Joyce Gilmore, twenty-three Hastings Street, Mendon. I'm just wondering about the well testing. Having had to have a well on my property back in the day, we, we had lovely, just ten-foot wells, and it was wonderful. And then they started salting the road, and that changed everything. So when we had to put a well in, it was very deep. And I'm just wondering, have you done some testing at all?
So the pump tests we're gonna run will be drilling these two wells.
Right, okay.
And then running a five-day pump test.
Right.
We're expecting to drill about three hundred feet.
I would say you might have to go to four.
Yeah, we've got four targeted, but we're hoping for three.
Just saying.
But there's a, there's a whole DEP process that we have to go through.
I just wondered if, you know, just.
Yeah, we're in the three to four hundred foot range.
Just to let you know what, what was, yeah, what's happening, having been there and done that. So, okay, I just wondered, and I'm on the Board of Health, so I will also be watching that too, so thanks.
Great. Thank you so much.
If all things are normal going forward, when will you be submitted to the Board of Health?
That's a great question. So we go through the local process with the planning board. Ideally exit this with a special permit. At that point, we'll still likely be going through the MEPA process at the state level. That will be drawn out for a bit because of the need for a DEP permit for the wells and a DOT permit for the roots, their access.
Section sixteen.
On Route sixteen. So that's an, that's really an unknown duration, how long the MEPA process, but coming out of that. But coming out of that, we'll be in a position where DEP is ready to approve the wells and DOT is ready to improve the off-site infrastructure improvements for the project. Once we have those, and probably while we're in the MIPA process, kind of where we're like, okay, it's coming, we'll be submitting to the Board of Health. So I would hope that's going to happen in twenty twenty-four.
Sounds good, thank you. Twenty twenty-four.
As already said.
All right, so we're not, we're not in any rush here. I mean, I see you want to get moving, but we can't do much because the, you know, the well situation might change your design, no?
We'll have to come back if that's the case. This, until we have this approval from this board, we're in a bit of a predicament at the state level.
Keep in mind that the board has a time period to act. We can't worry about what all these other boards are doing. We, we got to act on a plan and a special permit in this time period that we're allowed. So we need to keep the constraint of the, of the review of the public hearing around that. You know, if he's got to, keep in mind, even if we approve a plan, he's still going to meet all other requirements with all other boards and committees. So it doesn't give him any go-ahead, but we have a certain amount of things to act on unless they relieve those.
Okay, and the benefit here is you guys have a process in place that if going through the state process with DOT or DEP, something changes, we have to come back to the board and either ask for administrative approval, like if the well changes by five feet, or a project change, so amendment of the.
Thank you. Bob, I know you had a question earlier, do you?
I do.
Come on up.
I'll come up.
Bob Sweet, fifty Milford Street, Mendon, Mass. Couple of questions, if you can indulge me. First one, I know you said that there was a second egress. Does the second egress come on to Route sixteen?
Yes.
Can you show me where it comes in?
Yep. So the primary access and egress is at the signalized intersection with Millville Road here. The secondary access and egress is a right-in, right-out. So if you're going westbound on Route sixteen towards the site, you can make a right-in.
Yeah.
If you intend to continue going westbound or you just want to get to the signal and take a left.
Okay, so it keeps you on one side of the road.
You can't, you are not going to be able to take a left out of here.
You have to go to the lights.
Yeah, you gotta go to the lights. So if you want to make a left out of this development, you're going here to make that left.
I should add, we have our traffic engineer looking at this. He's not doing it in-depth like he did the last time because most of the data is already collected, but he is looking at it.
We don't really know what the DOT is, exactly how they're going to.
He'll be discussing that with them.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, DOT will have the final say on any improvements on their corridor. So really, it's going to come down to what they want. We're going to present what we think is appropriate, and then we're going to go through that process with them during, during MIPA review and then subsequently their access permit review.
Great, thank you. Well, hopefully, the next time we get together, you know, Jeff will be here and we'll have some, you know, some input.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Go ahead, sir. Are you done?
I have several questions. If somebody wants to jump in in between.
No, well, good, let's get them, I'll wrap them up.
Okay, so I live on Route sixteen and I, I'm in favor of commercial. Route sixteen's commercial, I have no problem with that. But this is a question for the planning board. Is the traffic from, from North Street backs up past my house? And I'm almost at the top of the hill from coming down and coming back up. What's all of this extra traffic going to do for that? Is that something that you have taken into consideration?
Question from the other board.
Well, I think that what's going to happen is that traffic is going to stop there and buy groceries on the way home.
Well, a lot of it has to do with the timing of the lights.
I don't think there'll be any extra traffic.
And that's, 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 you know, North Street right now backs traffic up past my house.
I would mention that the, we're looking at that, that intersection, the state's working on this intersection right here, right now.
Right.
So I know that's, that's in the process along with this lane.
Four of them are going to be, I know that.
Then there's going to be one at the top.
What's the state's plan? I mean, if you've seen the state's plan, there's going to be left and right turn lanes. It's going to change dramatically the traffic at that intersection, Bob. Unfortunately, other than our, our traffic study that we're doing for this project, which our, our, our representative will go over, well, and report back to the board what he thinks. But that's a state road, and we're relying on the mass DOT to come in and correct that road, which they're working on now. So eventually the problem will get solved. It's just a matter of when that problem gets solved.
Two-lane road would be, you know, four-lane road would be a really good area to have that, or at least a, a three-lane where you have a turn lane in the center. That's a.
Yeah, well, I think we're getting a little off topic. I mean, I don't want to get off this project we're talking about tonight, discussing intersection at Mill Gap. Those are, you know, our traffic representative for the town will tell us what he thinks. And the updates to the road to Route sixteen are coming. And the plan I saw had additional turn lanes at Mill Gap.
Okay. So one other question, is any of that in the twenty-five-foot no disturbs zone for conservation?
Any of the work down here?
Yes.
Just the two wellheads.
Is there any way to move it out of the twenty-five-foot no disturb?
DEP actually prefers it to be closer to the wellheads.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Sir. Ten-nine twenty-two, Washington. I have a couple of concerns. Privacy, I know you guys have changed the, so I'm, I'm the one on the left, right, right there, yeah. I had John in my backyard one day when he was surveying the land and showed him how my back property is raised. And I'll be like on a stage back there. So he said he put up a fence because they're going to have people walking by all the time. The dogs will be barking all the time and flipping out. So I know you've got a big green thing there, but it's not that thick, you know, it's. Let me just show you. Okay, yeah, so my, my septic field comes back to about here, it's raised. So he said it from my fence, yeah, oh, yeah, right here. Yeah, comes back to about here, I'd say my septic. I have a fence that ends right here, it's a six-foot. He said it grew to eight-foot up here because with people walking down these trails, my dogs are just going to flip out. He also said there'd be some. Now, one other thing, this is going to be on this system, is that correct?
No, this one will be.
All right, well, when they, when they bought this, they, there was a truck back here, and I think they broke pipes because now the septic's bubbling up and coming between these two properties because they buried a trailer over here by a trench where the water's supposed to drain. But now they've buried a trailer, it's all, it's all bringing this thing to my property down into my land now. I used to drain out here, buried a trailer. So I was just wondering if maybe that could get corrected. Take the trailer out and we do French and make sure the septic's correct.
Yeah, they're going to have.
My fence. Those are my concerns.
Yeah, so with their, with their improvements at home, I'd expect the Board Health, then be looking for septic system and apply, apply.
Okay, okay. And then, of course, the water I'm very concerned about.
Yep, yep.
As well, being hooked up to that.
John's here, you have any problem with the fence? Sounds like you guys.
No, that would agree.
Yeah, apparently want to make, yes, yeah.
That, that's old school.
You still do that? You still do the fence?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get that added to the revised set of plans.
And that trailer, that trailer was the end of the property, the trailer that.
The trailer was there, the landscape was buried in.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, the landscape was buried in. Yeah, you guys know why. The landscape just said, well, it's just, I don't know, they want like to bring each other back, so it's all collecting water.
Okay, all right, no problem.
All right, so is there any other questions from the audience?
Just in general.
Yeah, name, name and address, please, I'm sorry.
Is there the same number of units?
They need to speak into the microphone.
Is there any change in the number of units that this plan has versus the old one?
Yes, the old plan had twenty-seven units, this plan has thirty-five.
So you're adding eight more units to this request?
We are adding eight more units in compliance with the bylaw, which has a density of three units per acre. We're at two point eight.
Can you just say that again, in?
Yeah, so the overlay district, the bylaw talks about density for the residential. So the maximum density for the residential component of, of the make use development in this district is three units per acre. We're proposing thirty-five at a density of two point eight units per acre, so it's less dense.
But the commercial is.
Commercial is.
Great shrank.
Commercial is.
Do you want to speak to that?
Far reduced, so we were around sixty-seven thousand square feet for the commercial component. We're down to a little over forty-one thousand.
So is there a need to have it that dense? Is it all about somebody making money? Is that what the?
It's the bylaw, that's what, that's what they allow you to.
Yeah, it meets the requirement.
But if you're, if you're allowed to do it, is one thing, but should you do it?
Well, if you're allowed to do it, and you can, you have the land to withstand the septic system, and you have the land to do the well and everything, you know, including, one of those is, one of the thirty, would you say thirty-five? And one of those is the house that's existing on Washington Street, correct?
Right, yeah.
Two of them. So that, so you, so you have the two, three?
Well, the barn style will be.
Oh, in the barn, okay, so you have three that are, three that are on Washington, Washington Street that are already there.
Right.
And then, so you, now you're down to thirty, you know, thirty-two.
So you're going to make a unit of the barn?
Yes.
You know. Is that, is that?
Well, if, if there is, if they have enough land and enough to do what they can do on, on, on the land, on the property, then yes. They, they can, we can't, we can't stop them.
But I, if I can, I think that one of the questions she had was, is there a need? And I've been involved with affordable housing and housing since I've been in Mendon, which is, believe it or not, almost three years. And we had a meeting today, and there is an extreme need for over fifty-five housing. There is none. There is no, really, there's the Housing Authority complex. You don't have it. And we don't allow multifamily housing in Mendon, except for this new zoning. And it passed overwhelmingly at town meetings, so I think it was, the need has been demonstrated.
And people are being priced out of Mendon is what we've heard.
And we've, we're learning that day by day.
What did you say?
People can't afford to live here anymore. People are being priced out and need to move out of town, even though they don't want to.
Okay.
Well, I can answer your question about is there a need?
I don't want to get off topic.
So if somebody has five, they say they have four children and they all grew up.
Right.
So now they have a five-bedroom house.
Right.
And they can't afford the taxes and they can't afford to live, but they want to stay in Mendon.
Yeah.
Because they grew up here.
Right.
So now they can go live in an over fifty-five community, you know, smaller house, and still be able to live their, their retirement out or they'll live their life out.
Right.
And still stay in the town of Mendon, which they love.
Okay.
So that's what they're trying, we don't, we've been trying to put these up for years and we can never get, nobody ever wants them anywhere. We finally have a place.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying you shouldn't have.
I think we're getting off scope here, guys. The applicant has a right to utilize the bylaw as we, we did it. If he sees fit to utilize the bylaw and it allows for this amount of housing, the board doesn't have the authority to tell him he can't.
So, so could I ask, why was it, why did he only want to do twenty-seven before? And now he wants to do thirty-five?
That's because we had a, we had a huge resident, we had, the supermarket was pushed back in. We had another huge building here.
Yeah.
And these units got spread all through here. So this is a plan that I worked out with the abutters to leave this space in here all open and only disturb really the fields that are already cleared.
Yeah.
We have to clear just a little bit past the wall just for backyards, but other than that, we're leaving the woods the way they are.
So, but you're, you're only going to have one means of egress and e.
Correct, I've checked with the fire chief if he's here.
Yeah, and that's okay.
He's fine with it. Before, we were going to go out to Washington Street, but we got a lot of pushback on the entrance to Washington Street.
Right.
So we totally eliminated the Washington Street exit, even as an emergency access, he said we didn't need.
Okay. And one other thing is, and I, I know you talked about water, and I couldn't hear you, but I didn't understand. I'm on seven, and I get my water from the creek that runs at an angle through your site? Am I going to have a problem?
No, we're digging, we're digging, he flows way over here.
Right, and but for the regular, for the people that already live on Washington?
Yeah, we've had, we've had a, we had a peer review, a hydraulic study.
Yeah.
Hydrology study when we were here the last time, an external peer review, and they didn't find any problems.
So there won't be any problems getting that water? Okay, that, all right.
We have to do a very elaborate pump test, as I can tell you.
They got to make sure they have plenty of water.
We have, that has, that has to pass before we can even move forward.
And you had roundabouts before?
Yeah, the town was against, well, the people in the town were against that, the board was for it. So we went to a light because it was less intrusive than a lot of the members of the public. When we met with, when we met with the abutters and stuff, wanted a light, not a roundabout.
And that has a lot to do with mass DOT too. I mean, it's, you know, mass DOT kind of dictates what go, what's going to happen out on Route sixteen.
Yeah.
You know, we, they can work with them as best as they can.
Right.
But at the end of the day.
You're, you're at their mercy.
Right.
Well, I guess the, the, one thing that was raised before was that coming up that hill, right? See, get to Washington Street, and then you're going to have a light right there. You don't think that's going to pose a problem?
I guess that's mass DOT is with, again, you know, they, what, it might be a little bit better because now you're going to come out.
We're the experts.
Yeah, you have one at Ashford Avenue, two, one there. Yeah, yeah, you're going to have three lights in a short, little.
Wait, you're going to have a light at, at the end of Washington?
No.
No.
The end of Maple.
They may put one at the end of Washington. There, there, there is talk about one of the problems.
There is going to be one in Washington?
Well, they're, they're not sure, there is talk about that, but that has nothing to do with. Actually, we're getting off the, we're getting off. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I guess in general, my comments are about density.
Yep.
Right? And can that area handle the amount of density? I'm not against fifty-five and over, but you know, he's got other sites he could use.
Traffic now just passes through town, nobody stops. Right, now we'll get a little. Paying money, now they're stopping.
And that's why we paid, we paid a peer reviewer to review representing the town, not the applicant. They did a period traffic peer reviewer to analyze that for us.
And at the next.
And they, and they said fine, they said, okay?
Yeah, they, they haven't finished.
They passed the first one, but they're still reviewing this one.
The pass that, based on the design they had originally.
Yeah, so you're still kind of a little in the process of figuring it out?
This is a lot smaller than, the commercial base is a lot smaller on this plan than it was that already had passed.
Okay.
But at the end of the, our, our town, the towns engineer is going to, you know, dissect this plan. So if there's anything that comes up, we're going to, it's going to be addressed.
Okay.
We will, there's going to be multiple meetings that we're going to be here.
Will the public be able?
Oh, yes, yeah, you have more than, every meeting now, until.
Until you figure it all out.
Until it's approved.
They'll announce before we leave, when the next meeting, okay.
I, I am a little concerned about the density, living on Washington.
Like I said, we, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so that's specifically why, because that was concerns about everybody the first time through.
Yeah.
That's specifically why we're not taking any traffic now out on Washington.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have screening between, we're leaving the natural trees, we're not cutting any trees behind twelve, Washington. We have screening all through there that you won't probably be able to see the units once it's grown in from Washington Street. I, I, you know, it's.
So the whole focus is going to be out on sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah, so which is the more commercial area of the town, it's across from the other plaza. So that's why we went through all this. We, I mean, I met with the abutters multiple times to come up with a plan that didn't impact Washington.
Right, right, right.
With the way the store is high, I don't know how much you're going to see.
I'm sorry?
With the way the store is located, I don't know how much you're going to see from sixteen as far as the residential side goes.
Oh, the.
Yeah, yeah. See the road.
Yeah, so we got a landscape from the store to the residential, landscape from Washington to the residential, the store in front of it, and then the other small retail space next to it. So you're going to see very little.
We're going to, we're going to have many meetings here, so I mean, if there's any, anything that has to get done, I mean, any quick questions about something? Other than that, we should wait till our engineer, you know, comes back and he'll, he'll address any questions that, or, you know, John or the applicant. What, go ahead, Eric, you want to, you got a quick one?
Yeah, I got two quick ones.
Okay.
Really quick.
Yep.
Uh, Eric Hodge, three Bates Street. Um, Jack, since you'd mentioned affordable housing, um, saw in the bylaw that the expectation is ten percent of the units are. So does that mean four of these units are gonna be affordable? Okay.
They'll have to be registered and certified by the state.
Okay. That was one. See, told you quick. Um, number two, um, I was just curious if the traffic impact assessment accounted for the crosswalk and foot traffic that we talked about earlier. So my understanding with the, the Armud District is that we want it to be walkable. So we're encouraging residents to, to walk about the area with sixteen being pretty busy, you know, putting in a, you know, crosswalk, you know, and a, a walk light and whatnot. I'm curious if that's accounted for.
They are definitely looking at it. That's what I can tell you. I haven't seen anything back from them. I gave them the plans whenever we got them and they gave me a scope and that is in there to look at that intersection and they'll look at the crosswalks.
Okay.
I just did another project, uh, on Plains and Hartford East about crosswalks. They're very good. They're very good. And they'll actually have a discussion with Mast D O T about this. Even though John's right, Mast D O T will do what they want, but I think they'll listen.
Yeah, yeah. They tend to listen, especially if the planning board gets involved in it. They'll listen to the planning board more than they'll listen to the contract.
Yeah, I think if everybody works together, we'll probably, if it does all work out, I think it'll be a nice little, uh, nice little asset for the town.
What, this whole project?
Well, the grocery store, I think is pretty nice, right?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, two years ago, whenever this first came in, a lot of people talked to me about the grocery store.
I talked to anybody, everybody. But in a positive?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I would rather go to Mendon, go down the street to the grocery shop.
The other stuff, but that's gone now.
Yes, but, um, I think that, anyway, let's, if there's nobody else that has any more questions, I think we should just move along until the next meeting and then maybe we'll have some answers. Any of your questions might be answered, you know, right in the meeting.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
When's our next meeting?
You want to go a week or two? I mean, two or four?
Um, Jeff, Jeff hasn't replied yet.
He's sick.
Oh.
He hasn't.
I think probably best is.
I think four, because we're gonna want to have.
I agree.
We'll do all the revisions. I have some revisions the Abotters asked for.
Okay, you'll put, you'll put that fence, maybe just get the, all that little things that'll be on the plan. So there won't be any questions.
Okay.
It's the twenty-second.
Of April?
Of April, at six.
What we'll do is we'll take, when we receive peer review comments, we'll take peer review comments, the butter comments, and we'll incorporate all those into a revised concept that we submit to the board.
Bill, you have any issues with April's twenty-second?
Uh, no, I'm just looking at my schedule. Uh, I should be good for April twenty-second.
Okay. Make a motion to next meeting April twenty-second?
Six.
April sixth?
Oh, at six.
Oh, yeah, at six. At six. All in favor?
Hi, Phil Embragian.
Thank you. All right, so.
So the twenty-second, six P M.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I'll sit with you guys.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucky, Jeff.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Could you send?
We got a discussion.
So we're not, why not? I want to make sure John Nannart gets all the comments from John Dudley, from Board of Health, from Isabella.
The first and the third.
I don't know. I guess that's, this is the.
The first.
With the, what, oh, maybe there might be a holiday? Is there a holiday?
Don't wait a minute, Gail.
It's not, it's not gonna on my call.
Oh, school vacation.
Oh, it's because the fifteenth is a holiday.
Oh, yeah, it is.
That's why. Wait a minute.
Yeah, that it is, actually.
It's not holiday.
But that's a holiday.
We have a selection with a question.
What's the holiday?
Well, I mean, we can, is it possible to get this, these plans uploaded to the town website? I think so, yeah. I think they're already on there. Oh, cool. Yeah.
A few days ago they were.
We'll get that. You're right.
Discussion, yeah. You're in the hot seat all night, buddy.
That's a no.
Yeah, right, yeah. You think this is easy for you? All right, um, this is a discussion with John Nannat for forty-five, forty-nine, Exbridge Road, Stormwater.
Yes, so, um, so on the seventh, December seventeenth, I'll give you a little last trick. December.
Can you grab a mic?
Yeah. Yeah, where is that?
On December seventeenth, we had a five-inch rain event up there, um, at forty-five, forty-nine Exbridge Road, which is a steep hill. We're blasting, um, we're not blasting, we're hammering ledge, we're processing ledge. So at that time, um, we had a ton of, um, additional erosion control and fence. Besides what was called for on the plan, which was along the border, silt fence and waddles. We had a second row of silt fence and waddles, um, in front of that, that one. We had, uh, five plunge pools going up. We had the area where the, the basin is gonna be, the underground basin is gonna be, all chipped out. And we had that serving as a temporary basin in front of the, and then we had a pipe going underneath so we could get, um, equipment across to the front of the site. Um, during that storm event, it was five inches in a couple hours. Everything, the basin filled up, the pipe filled up, the plunge pools filled up. The water raised so high that it overflowed the silt fence. The silt fence held because we had two rows and two rows of, uh, bales, but, um, the silt fence flowed, flowed over the top of the silt fence and we had silt in the lower wetland area. Um, Conservation Commission issued an enforcement order for us to come in and come up with a restoration plan for the lower wetlands. So at that time, um, D E P, after that storm, was out on the site, saw all the controls we had in, had no problem with the site. They came back two weeks later after it kind of dried out. We added two more plunge pools and we added thirty flock locks, which helped the silt settle out of the water. So it goes into the wetlands clean. Um, we added that into the temporary erosion control. Um, once that was done, D E P came back out, they found the site was good. There was nothing else we could do. Um, the same time that we, after that rain, we started SWIP inspections every two weeks and after every rainstorm or a half an inch or more. So since that time, I think we've had seven or eight SWIP inspections that had, has found no deficiencies on the site. So the problem at Conservation is during our original, um, meetings, there is an access road that we built up like this and around that comes out near the upper building so that we could haul material up here, process it and bring it out through the road here. We haven't had sent any material off-site because all the crushed stone that we've been, almost fifteen thousand tons of three-inch stone that we've used and we're using on the site. So we basically have dug out all the soil in the lower section and replaced it with stone, clean stone. So we wouldn't get any more silt coming down. Um, this is the section in here that we're currently processing everything. We have a crusher and a screener up there. I think they've removed the screener and the crusher is getting removed tomorrow. This is, was, so this was cut, I have a plan here from an email to Jeff Walsh. Um, it was on, uh, seven nineteen and this was a revision of page three of the original plans. Because at that time, you noticed that this area was cut and in our drainage report, we didn't have that as being cut. So this plan was revised on, uh, on the original set on seven thirty nineteen, stamped on eight, seven nineteen, showing the areas that were cut. At that time, we got in trouble from D E P. So the project got held up for two years. Um, not, not for many much, the cut area because of the stream down here that connects to the lower section. So over those two years, we rebuilt the stream and diverted it around the building. After the two years and D E P was fine with what we did, we restored some, uh, buffer area in here. We came back, we went to Conservation and we got a water repetition issue. So the problem is Conservation is saying that the stormwater is not right because of this temporary disturbance up here. But this, this is a temporary disturbance. The trees were already cut. We have leveled it, we have grubbied and leveled it off and smoothed it out. But we've, we're already starting to restore this area. They started this week, it'll be done in the middle of next week and we're hydroseeding the end of the following week. So we're hydroseeding with a conservation mix. In HydroCAD, um, things are, things like runoff and stuff are based on a coefficient number. So if you have a wooded area like this, the coefficient is fifty-five. The higher the coefficient, the more runoff you get. If you have loom and grass, it's sixty-one, slightly high. What we're doing here is a conservation mix of soils that we're replacing. It wasn't a terrible soil, the B-type, that didn't really soak into the ground. We're replacing the soil there with a good, uh, conservation mix that is going to absorb the soil and we're gonna be spraying it with a conservation mix seed, which is a mixture of, um, weeds, grass, shrubs, you know, branchy. Yeah, not, no, we're not using the wildflower.
Oh, you're not saying?
No, it's like a branchy, woody mix.
Okay, true.
That has a coefficient of forty-eight, lower than both grass and forest. So this area restored here will get less runoff than, um, than what it was originally. So the prob, so even during all the heavy rainstorms, rainstorms, we've never had any silt release from this area up here. There's been no silt in the upper wetland, no silt in the stream. Um, what happened was this was all, the silt we got from the bottom was all from the stream running down and where we cut into the bank to do the detention basin, that soil eroded. It was a very fine silt. It was hard to get out of the thing. We used flock locks to get it out. But we finally got it all squared away. Um, so, you know, they're saying that this wasn't taken into account in the drainage cows, but it's temporary disturbance. Um, it's outside of the hundred-foot buffer. That's why they kicked it to you, so I could come in and explain what we did. Um, it was always our impression when I was in front of the board that this whole road was gonna come around and we're gonna process the materials in this area. The trees were already cut. We didn't cut any more trees to do this. They were all cut. Um, we actually leveled it off. So it's, the slope's on a steep, so you get more time of concentration for the water to grow in the ground. They're saying it's a change in the plan. The plan hasn't changed. This parking lot's the same, the drainage structures are the same, the detention basin is the same. There's no change in the final outcome. So the final outcome is still based on impervious area, has the same amount of impervious that we were in front of the board originally, as it is when we're gonna finish the project.
David. Okay.
What did, um, Jeff, when he commented and you must have, uh, aligned with what he was looking for, he was aware that those trees are gone, correct?
Yeah, so this was on seven nineteen. So I found an old, I, I forwarded the email, Bill. I found an old email, email from the engineer at the time, Bob Fox, and to Jeff Walsh, sending him this plan, that this was one of the comments that he noticed when he was on a sidewalk out there because he was reviewing it, these trees were clear. And we redid the existing conditions plan to the, to show that the trees were cut there.
Okay.
And then we were under no restrictions up here from Conservation or D E P. You can see these dock areas, that was the area that they cut into, the tree clare cut into the buffer because he pulled a hundred feet, but it's up a slope like this. So he had cut some trees in the buffer. So that, those are the areas we couldn't, um, touch, which we didn't. So when we, we stayed the area that we were gonna be using, we came a hundred and twenty-five feet from all the wetlands and we stayed the limit, a limit that we were gonna, you know, use to store our material, crush the ledge, um, you know, store the rock for the site down the bottom.
John, and if this was approved at Conservation, they were aware that the trees weren't there?
Yes, they were. That was, yeah, it was approved two years after the, three years almost after the trees were cut. So they were a hundred percent aware of the trees because that was all done through D E P and D E P had already signed off on our remediation.
So I think, I think at this point, um, since Jeff has not been available and obviously the board needs direction from Jeff, um, I think to move forward with this, I, I'd like Jeff to review the plan, um, obviously, and go over what, you know, what the intention is after, um, you know, after you reclamation, after you put the seed down and stuff and see Jeff's, uh, opinion is at that point in time.
Well, I can, I mean, go ahead, go ahead, Jack. I want a question.
I was just gonna, I agree with, uh, John didn't say anything I, I hadn't heard before, except that at least my conversations with the agent, who's the only person I've talked to from the Conservation, and the email she sent me, she's, she doesn't know. I know you believe, and we, she doesn't know whether this is an alteration of your two thousand nineteen stormwater permit. And they're not sure and it's out of their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So you gotta appreciate when one commission or one board gets an email letter from another board, we have to honor that and pursue it. It's, it's common etiquette.
We're not, we're not against that. I just.
I just want to be.
Hold on, everybody. Hold on.
Go ahead, Bill.
It, yeah, it's, this is very simple. All we're gonna do is look to support the CONCON. I, we'll leave that result to our engineer who represents the planning. Um, we can reopen a public hearing based on this. We can't do anything of such sort. Um, we can't rely on engineering from the, the CONCON, although I think Jeff is CONCON engineer too. But, um, we are, we'll wait until Jeff, have him review with the intention of what they, I mean, the projects, the works are even up. So there's nothing we can back up now. So we'll have Jeff take a look at it based on them reclaiming that area. They, see if Jeff thinks it's enough. And if it is, there shouldn't be any problems going forward. If it isn't, Jeff will let us know.
Got a question. One second, go ahead.
Just to boil this down to its most basic elements, there's a, there's a track record.
Jay, could you talk into the microphone?
Yeah.
Just boiling this down to its most simplistic elements, there's been issues with the property. And even if they've been remediated, once those remediation measures are removed at one point going forward, we still don't know how it's gonna hold up. So the ask is just to get the perspective of the, the expert, the engineer, before we move forward? Is that what's in front of us?
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, Jeff was prepared to be here and he would have preliminary answers, but he's sick.
I just would like to add something. So right now, since this, since that relief happened, the stream's been diverted, it's been piped. So it, the clean water's no longer mixing with any soil. It's piped all the way to, um, where the crossing is and it's dumping into an area that hasn't been disturbed before it goes into the wetlands. Um, so all the clean water on the site is clean, it's coming down the stream. Uh, we're not getting any silt. All the water coming everywhere is clear. We've used about fifteen rolls, five hundred-foot rolls of a raffin' filter fabric. We've done berms of, uh, three-quarter inch crust stone wrapped in filter fabric with three-inch stone on, on top of it at all the edges of all the wetlands to filter any water that goes through because the silt was so fine, the silt fence wasn't really working. Um, so there's been, I welcome Jeff to come and see this.
Uh, quick, so but what, what we're trying to get to is that the plan has not been changed by, everything that you've done up there has been done according to plan. Okay, so Jeff needs to just look at this and make sure that he took into consideration the land up on the top of the hill. He took that into consideration for his stormwater management.
But, wow.
Basically.
This is a temporary, it's a temporary disturbance.
Correct.
Pre- imposed, right? So the pre- imposed are gonna work because it's the same thing at the end. Actually, it gets a little bit better with what we're doing.
So I guess that, I think it shouldn't be an issue, but, but us telling the Conservation and the engineer telling the Conservation is two different things.
Yep.
Now, can you come on?
But just a final point, what is, what are, what are you doing up there?
We're just doing a parking lot, we're doing a parking lot at the bottom, at the bottom building for a side entrance with a new curb cut. We're closing up the steep curb cut that goes up to the lower buildings. And, um, and we're doing the first wetland crossing. And eventually where that access road comes out, we're gonna be doing something at the top. This is another over fifty-five oval age zone. So we're planning on doing some over fifty-five housing.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the future. We haven't submitted that yet. I'm, I'm working on that as we speak, so that'll be coming down the road.
Okay.
All right, um, any other questions? Bob? Yes, I'm sorry, sir.
Bob, suite fifty Milford Street. Uh, just one question, John.
Yeah.
Um, has the, the grade changed at the top of the hill?
Yeah, it's, so there's, you can see right here, there was a, a big ledge now here and a big ledge now here that have been flat. So that's the only thing that's been done. Um, and that was, that was like clean ledge and this was clean ledge. So those now are gonna be covered with soil, so that's even more, more impervious.
And out of the buffer zone.[1793.91]
Yeah, and out of the buffer zone. We haven't done any work on that.
What is the depth of the soil that you're going to replace on top? Because if you're breaking all the ledge up there, now you're right on top of rock, right?
Yeah, it's all ledge.
So how, how deep are you gonna go with soil?
We'll probably do four inches of soil.
Four inches?
Yeah, of conservation.
Roots are gonna, tree roots are gonna...
There was trees growing on the ledge up there and no soil. Literally cracks in the ledge.
Okay.
So we don't plan on having trees grow back in this area. This is gonna be brush.
Now, is that temporary until you start the over 50 housing, and then that'll all be ripped up again? Thank you, Bob.
So, yeah, John, that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is it, I don't know what measures you've taken are temporary or permanent, but based on what work is gonna be done, are the measures that whatever was put forth for stormwater, are they significant enough for the end state, and is that what they're looking at?
Yeah, so absolutely. So the remediation measures, you know, the restoration of this area is gonna be done full, just like it was gonna stay forever. Because we don't know if we're gonna get, get through with our, our next project here, or when we're gonna get to it.
You're gonna make it stable.
Yeah, it's gonna be totally stable. We're using a real heavy tackifier on the conservation mix when they hydroseed this area to stabilize everything till it grows.
Come on up. How you doing?
Good, how are you? Uh, Peter Lyman, 66 Uxbridge Road. I'm a butter across the street from the project. So, uh, you've been across and seen all the collection of water, and Karen's yard in between our yards.
Yeah.
Right next to her there. So it's been rainy, right? It's been rainy since last summer, and, but also you've removed a bunch of trees across the road. So have you or the engineers decided or looked at this and said that this is like a temporary state, or?
No, so, so right now, we're not done, so...
I know that, right.
You know, the underground basin's not in, the drainage structure's not in. So this is, we're kind of, you know, we're so far further along than we were when December 17th. We're all getting really good clear runoff now. We're not getting anywhere near as much, number two. And it, the site's just in really good shape right now. I know you went through hell with the hammering.
Yes.
We have, I, I've talked to everybody, I've talked to your wife and Karen many times. I, I know there was a big puddle in her yacht after that December 17th storm. I'm assuming it's been better lately during the rainstorms. I think that was the worst one. We had another three-inch rainstorm, we had no release of silt or anything in the three-inch storm because we were so much further along with the site. That detention area now is functioning like a detention area because all the, all the stone is in there. So it's holding back that water now. It's not letting it just run off like it was before. So I, I don't foresee you guys having any more problems further down.
Yeah, it just seems like the water we have there now, we haven't seen before. You know, I have water between my yard and hers where it's never been wet before. It's a low area there.
Yes.
Her driveway fills up in that one area after every rainstorm, and it's...
I think we've had a lot more rain.
I, I understand that, so.
That could be a landscaping issue on her property.
Yeah, I, I don't, there's nothing, there's nothing coming off our site that we can cross the street to your side.
I think that really what needs to happen is let, let the towns engineer, he's gonna take a look at it. Maybe you'll go do a sidewalk, and let's just get everything, let, let him, let the expert tell us what's going on.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I do know that in that big storm, December, December 17th, I went over and looked at Karen's lot, and there was water coming up through the drain and all, but it was the same thing throughout the state.
Right, and that, that's been an ongoing thing for years, because when the water at the, that, that pipe goes into the lake. When the water on the lake is higher than the pipe, there's no ways, no place for the water to go.
You didn't silt it up.
Yes, so I mean, that's, that's not something new.
And that's, I still have the offer out there, if the Lake Association wants to permit us cleaning that out, I'll get the equipment over there in the main house. I've said that since day one of this project, because we went and looked at that pipe from day one, and it was already silted. There was about an inch of the pipe left that was shown, that's it.
Thank you.
So that, that's a, that's a problem too.
Yep.
Alright, we're gonna have a lot of other stuff to, uh, yep, we're gonna have, hold on.
I think first of all, we, we get Jeff, we get Jeff up to look at it, get his review, and then we'll move forward from there.
I got one, Kathy is online. Let me just get a quick question from her.
Hi, Damien. Hi, thank you. Catherine Hackinson, 25 Washington Street. I have a question. Are there any plans for blasting?
Where?
Where they're working.
She's talking about the new project.
Are you talking at the grocery store or on Route 16?
No, she's talking on 45.
Oh, no, there is... Are you blasting over there?
Yes, we, we can't get that front knob to break, so we're in front of Mass DOT trying to get a blast in from that range.
So out by the road, they may be doing a little bit at the, at this time, but nothing, they haven't heard anything yet.
So we managed to get 75% of the project done.
You have to talk into this microphone, John, because she can't hear you.
Kathy, we've got about 75% of the project done. There's 25% that the rock is too hard to break hydraulically. So we, we've been meeting with blasters and Mass DOT to get a permit for that front section.
Okay, and so I guess I have concerns, you know, because my daughter is living across from there and just built a brand-new home. And so, of course, where you have concerns about the well that we just drilled, the new foundation that was just put in, all the, um, you know, they, they spent a lot of money with all the extra insulation, the whole new process of insulating a house. And will there be any inspections done before blasting to make, you know, so that if there is something that happens, um, that we have, um, I guess recourse?
Yes, the blasting, the blasting company will be doing blasting surveys of foundations and pitches inside the houses or the walls and stuff like that on all the properties within 500 feet of the blast. And I will be sending out letters to all the direct abotters in across, in across the street. So that's a direct abotta, about, about testing low water.
It's also permitted through the fire department, too.
Yes, yeah, and it's permitted through the fire department. But I'll also be sending out a letter to all the abotters about testing their wells prior to the blasting.
Okay, um, testing their wells as far as the, the content of the water, um, I guess what about how many gallons per?
No, it'll be, it'll be water quality, not volume.
Not volume, because could that affect, I mean...
No, this is very shallow blasting. This is very shallow blasting. It's only going two feet below the finished grade. So it's only going down. So if you look at the building, we have a driveway now, if you look at the building, and it's kind of in the back, the low, the low building, it's only going two feet below that slab, so it shouldn't affect any kind of groundwater. They're gonna be small blasts because we're so close to the, um, buildings. The piece that we can get is the piece that's kind of right around our building, so they have to do really shallow, small blasts, a lot of them, rather than big blasts, or they're gonna destroy our building. We have a block foundation there. So if it doesn't, our foundation, it's absolutely not gonna do yours.
You'll be notified before this even happens.
Yeah, okay, but I guess, and just looking at it, that piece that's, that's getting up there now, what would, why couldn't you just leave that the way it is? I mean, it all is so kind of, you don't see just these, you know, block buildings.
Yeah, so some of that, the front section of that is gonna stay. The blasting we're doing is for the parking lot, so half, it's about half of that. Half of that knob in the front is gonna stay. It's the half, the back half that's gonna blast, be blasted off. So we have to get a DOT permit from Mass Highway for anything within 500 feet of the, the state highway. So that front section of that is gonna stay. That, that's what you're gonna see, but we are gonna loom seed that and landscape that. You won't just see light there.
And, and what are you, what are you thinking timeframe-wise?
Uh, so, so we've been, we've had the blasting permit in front of Mass DOT since January 1st of 2023, and we still don't have it, so I am not gonna...
There is no rush.
I am not gonna, I, I would like to say within the next four to six weeks, but, um...
Wheels turn slowly.
I, I cannot, I can't even, I can't even say. I wish I could say. We have to, once we get the permit, we have to put signage up for six weeks prior, so it's gonna be probably at least 12 weeks.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else? Go ahead, Bob. Uh, your name and address, please. Do come on up to the microphone. Yeah, they know who Bobby is.
Bob Sweet, 50 Milford Street. Did I, I'm looking for clarification.
Give me the microphone, Bob.
Is the underground storage unit not in yet?
No, it's not in.
So the three-inch minus that's in that parking lot area, you're gonna dig that up again and then put it in?
Just with, just with where the chambers go. So that's the base, that's the base that, the underground basin, that's all your storage. And then you have these units that go in, in there.
Now, the two-inch, uh, the two-foot diameter pipe that goes under the building is in, right?
Is in, yes, but right now, we have that stream, the stream from the top diverted into that, so we don't fix that.
Right, and that's what's coming from behind the buildings?
Andrew, can I interrupt for one second here? I think we're getting off topic. This was, this, uh... We can't relive the, uh, the proposed, uh, plan again.
So, alright, so thank you. We're gonna, if nobody else has any different question, we're gonna wait for our town engineer to meet with John and go over everything. That should hopefully address everything for the conservation, and then...
And that'll either be the first or the 22nd.
First of April? Wanna put it on for the first of April, that they get it done in time?
The only thing we have right now, right? She's looking at me like, put it on the 22nd.
Well, let, let, you know what, if Jeff has it, this might be something that they can take care of where we don't even have to be at a meeting. This, this is not a hearing. We're not opening anything. So, Bill, are you comfortable with that?
What's that?
This is something, if Jeff looks at this plan, everybody acknowledges this. We don't have to even, they don't have to bring this in front of us again.
No, we'll just advise, we'll just advise of Jeff's findings at the next meeting.
Alright. Thank you. Okay.
No, this is no public hearing, so...
Correct.
We'll just, if he comes back, either positive or negative.
Thank you, everybody, for sticking it out.
Alright.
Everybody.
Well, no one showed up for the armad...
No, that's alright.
We have a motion on the floor.
You second? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, thank you. Good night. Jase first made the motion. Very second.
Alright, guys. Good night.